Wanting to know if you think it would be damaging for the town if the scripture were just on.
Yeah.
I would like this.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Kill you.
Who are all the people in the room? Do we know?
Proclamations.
Okay. Cool. Awesome.
Um, while we start, this will be. This is for a second. For you. I'm reading the whole thing, right?
Yeah.
There. Oh, my gosh.
Or a problem solved.
2023. Please rise for the pledge.
Mary Lekine?
Here.
Councilmember Romanella?
Present.
Mayor Protem King?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Here.
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Here.
Thank you.
Before we begin and get to the agenda, there's one item that I was looking to move, and I guess we're going to open that up for discussion real quick as to why we should or should not move it. And you've got Mr. Cole on the line, and this booth is here. So my thought was that we would discuss this and not conduct a vote on this ordinance. This would be six B due to the fact that there are some concerns about completely removing the three appendices from Title 18 without a replacement or even a date to replace them mentioned. So I don't know if anybody, if this, if you want to explain why that is what it is so the council can hear.
Okay. So when Title 18 was adopted, it attached some administrative documents. So our problem is, right now, we have checklists, applications, signature blocks, agreements that have typos that are not adequately reflecting what is in the code itself, and we as staff cannot make changes to them to make them correct unless we bring them back as an ordinance to you. So the documents themselves are only going to, for instance, checklist. The items that are required with an application are identified in Title 18. A checklist is something we give to the applicant so they don't have to read through the entire ordinance. It's just a checklist. We take that checklist, we say, these are the things you need per the code, we check them off if they have them, if they don't, we send it back and say, give it to us again. Applications. When you bring in an application, you fill out your name and all of these other things. Public improvements agreement, typos all the way throughout it, but sometimes we need to modify it to address staging or phasing of plans. And then we have the CMRS agreement. So they're not going away. You're just giving us the ability to go in and make the administrative changes that we need to make to them. If there is a change to the public improvements agreement that is of any significance, you would have to see it as a council anyway. Those should be coming to you as part of your final plat per the ordinance anyway. So that's something we're going to be implementing as we move forward. The CMRS agreement would come to you anyway as an agreement that you have to do with that utility. It just allows us to go in and make those modifications. Some of the developers have issues with the wording in the PIA right now because it doesn't necessarily, it's not a, excuse me, it's not a one size fits all. Some of them are for site plans, so we get our, you know, the sidewalks and the trash enclosures. Some of them are for subdivisions where we get our roads and our sidewalks. So it's, it's really, that's what we're doing. If you want to leave appendix two and three, that's fine, you're going to be making those amendments, but we really need one to be pulled out because right now our hands are tied when we're telling people to bring things in and our checklist doesn't reflect what the code says.
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, this is just a discussion to see whether we want to proceed with this or not.
Yeah, because it is a little confusing if we're, if we're just eliminating an appendix without some type of replacement of some sort. So you have a series of checklists that you give them now? Is that correct?
Yes. If you looked at the appendices for Title 18, it is a series of documents. You have a application for CMRS, you have an application for development projects, you have a checklist for a final plat, you have a checklist for a PUD. We have checklists that have the wrong information, we have applications that don't have a checklist. So as staff, we are giving documents out that have the wrong information, and we can't change them because they were adopted by an ordinance.
So, but if, but if we eliminated this, then what would happen?
Well, if you eliminate it, we as staff are now given an administrative document with it, I mean, what other applications do you have that are codified? We are taking an application or checklist, we're updating it to reflect what's in the code, and then what we're doing now is we're creating columns to have the applicant check off where they did it. We get to check off if they received it, we provide comments to them on why it does or doesn't meet the criteria for what they need to provide. So a title commitments, it's out of date, title commitment doesn't meet, it's not the property that is in question. So we're trying to make the process a little easier for the applicants to understand, help us keep on track with it as far as how many times we get this document back and forth before we even can deem an applicant or an application complete, but also just the main things of a final plat has to have X, Y, and Z. The code says it has to have that, but the checklist that was codified doesn't reflect that.
So.
So we're not getting rid of any of these things, we're just now taking them away from the code, and I'm not away from the code, they're not codified anymore, they're just an administrative document that flows with what the code says.
So if you, if you in the planning staff walked out tomorrow, somebody can walk in here and, and have the documentation that they would need to process these applications without this being in the code anymore?
Yes. Uh huh. So they're, they're still there, we're just updating them.
So in the past, and Councilmember Romanella and I went through, through this with the previous planning staff and, and council, they certainly asked for a modification. We saw lots of red lines, lots of black lines, or new, new text. Why are we being asked to completely remove something instead of you fixing it and bringing the fixes to the council to have it recodified with the fixes?
We can do that. We can bring you 20 or 30 checklist, we can bring you 20 or 30 signature blocks. If you look online, the appendices aren't even as, they're not part of the online ordinance. These are documents that were created as part of an application process. It's not changing Title 18 at all. We're not asking you to change what is required with the final plat, what's required with a preliminary plat. We're asking you to allow us to take application material out of a codified ordinance and allow us as staff to make it correct, to reflect what's in the ordinance itself. So these appendices are, they're in addition to what Title 18, I don't know how better to say it, let me, I'm trying to think of this. So if, if you make an application, we give you an application and we give you a checklist. That checklist should reflect what Title 18 says, and right now it does not. So if you want us to go back through and redline all of our checklist, redline everything, and then still codify it, we can. It's just another ordinance, and it seems like overkill for an application. But I don't know how many other applications have been codified in the Town of Monument.
So if we go through with this and you say that we take, we remove this stuff to fix it, are we then pausing the application process until it's fixed so we make sure that there's no gap or?
No, you'd be trusting your staff to look at that, make the changes to the applications that we've already noted.
What, what she, what she's saying is that it's already in the code, but the applications don't match what's in the code. So the code requires that those documents get presented, but the app, since the, since the applications and checklists are codified, they can't modify those in any way, and they don't reflect what's in the code. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct. We are not asking to change the code itself or what is required. We're asking for the ability to change those, what I consider administrative documents, just like a business license. Is it codified? If, oh, okay, so.
No, it sounds, it sounds like what, what they're asking is for, for us to give them an opportunity to streamline the process and some of the, the documents to better reflect Title 18, but it doesn't absolve staffs or applicants of Title 18 requirements that I.
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Cole, you have your hand up. Feel free to chime in.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to take another stab at, at explaining because it does seem to be some, some confusion. So when you adopted your code through ordinance 25, 2021, besides the, the code sections in Title 18, there were these appendices that were attached, and I suspect that, that whoever you worked with, you know, to assist in, in preparing that, came up with, with all these forms and checklists and the like, which is, is fairly typical, but that's usually an administrative task. And, and so I think what, what, you know, is being asked is to take out what is almost always an administrative assignment to come up with forms and, and put it back into that realm and get it out of the codified ordinance.
Okay. Everybody good with leaving it on the, the agenda? Okay, so then, thank you. We have a, an agenda and a consent agenda. Any modifications to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda and the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Ms. Erickson.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Up next is 4A, proclamations, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do we have any guests to speak to that? Can you give us your name, please, and?
Good evening, I'm Christina Iadice, I'm the Public Information Officer for the El Paso County Department of Human Services, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity to really shine a light on something that impacts all communities in El Paso County, which is child abuse, neglect, and abuse. So thank you for the proclamation. I just wanted to, you know, share a little bit of information. So last year, we had more than 21,000 calls for abuse and neglect in El Paso County, and we always want to take the opportunity to remind everyone that you don't need to know what abuse or neglect looks like to make a call to the hotline, you just need to be worried about a family because that call can help connect a family to resources. So it might not be a situation of abuse and neglect, it might be a situation of a family needing, say, food assistance or some other kind of help. So just thank you so much. I brought pinwheels for everyone, which I'll leave in the back of the room, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Okay, any questions? Okay, well, thank you. Councilmember Abbott, would you read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas finding solutions for child abuse and neglect, a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, requires input and action from everyone because the well-being of our children today will shape the future of Colorado and our community, and whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse and neglect, and whereas all parents and caregivers need support sometimes, and supporting all children and families early is far less costly to society and individuals than healing from trauma, and whereas community leaders, policymakers, and elected officials play a unique role in building a community for kids by understanding the programs and policies that support child maltreatment prevention, listening to parents' needs, and examining community planning through this lens to build healthy communities, and whereas effective prevention efforts succeed because of partnerships created among human service agencies, public health, the district attorney's office, schools, faith, and civic organizations, the medical community, law enforcement, and first responder agencies, the business community, nonprofits, and concerned citizens, and whereas everyone plays a role in preventing child abuse and neglect, helping to build thriving communities so that families and children may also thrive. Therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Monument, Colorado. No matter where you live, everyone has the power to contribute towards a brighter tomorrow for all children done this 17th day of April 2023. Thank you.
I would like to say that I'm glad she read that, not me, but I do support everything she said.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is National Library Week, Jean Carrier. Did I say that right? Okay. I want to make sure it wasn't Jean or something French.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to say this proclamation to the council members and to the mayor. I am also joined by a couple of the staff and board members from Pike's Peak Library District. So with, with me tonight, and I will back up, so my name is Jean Carrier, and I am the branch manager of the Monument Library, sorry for that, and I have Debbie English with me, who is a member of our Board of Trustees, Abby Simpson, who is a regional director over the Monument Library, Lance James, who I'm going to attempt to get his title correctly, is Chief Financial Officer and Executive Foundation Director with the Pike's Peak Library District. So thank you very much for this opportunity to have this proclamation, and I also, if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but.
Any questions? Okay. Councilmember Fiorito, will you read the proclamation, please?
Proclamation recognizing National Library Week, April 23 to 29, 2023. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning by cultivating spaces for belonging, personal growth, and strong communities, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, abilities, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, including veterans, active-duty military, and their families, small business owners, community organizations, and places of worship. And whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals, and whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, for all, and whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Therefore, the Monument Town Council hereby proclaims National Library Week, April 23 to 29, 2023. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available, done the 17th day of April 2023.
Next time you have to do an quieter voice since it's about libraries.
Can I ask you a question?
Oh, yeah.
Are late fees waived during this week?
So I will say.
Busted.
So a couple of years ago, we did away with late fees altogether, so there's only a couple of things that we charge late fees on, and that's a State Park pass and also our hotspot, so I'm, yeah, we don't charge late fees, just return the book if you can. We're not, no judgment on.
Possibly you shouldn't have, I'm not have said that publicly, but, you know, there you go.
Do you want me to strike that from the record?
I have a question. Yeah. Are you guys still giving out corn to feed the ducks?
Yes.
One of my, I love that library.
That is a monument thing. It really is. I love it, too.
Yeah, that's my, the Monument Library is my favorite place in town, so thank you.
Yeah, and we, we actually do have a gecko now that the kids can come in and see, too. Madagascar Dave, was it Gecko? And her name is Ruby, so.
So you get a beer at the brewing company, you feed the ducks, you see the gecko, life is good.
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
Read a book. Read a book.
Oh, read the book, okay, read the book, okay.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we have something else that's fun, this is about liquor.
Yay.
5A, we have a public hearing item regarding a new hotel and restaurant liquor license application for the infamous Papa Bear Pizza.
Infamous.
They're, they're fabulous. Ms. Erickson?
The library just left.
They're going to get some liquor.
To go read their books. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, before you, as an application for a new hotel and, hotel and restaurant liquor license for Ichabod LTD, doing business as Papa Bear Pizza located at 243 Washington Street, Suite B. The application was filled on March 16th, 2023. The notice of public hearing was published in the Tri-Lakes Tribune on April 5th, 2023, and posted in a conspicuous manner on the premise April 6th, 2023. There has not been within two years preceding the date of application a denial of an application by either state of Colorado or liquor licensing authority of the Town of Monument for the same class license as, at the same location, or within 500 feet of the same location because the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood and desires of the inhabitants were satisfied by the existing outlets. From the evidence submitted, the applicant is entitled to possession of the premise where the applicant proposes to exercise the license being, being applied for. The selling of alcohol beverages for consumption on the premise in the manner proposed in the application is not in violation of the Town of Monument Municipal Code or any other applicable laws, rules, or regulations of the Town of Monument, County of El Paso, or State of Colorado. The building where the applicant proposes to exercise a privilege of alcohol beverages for consumption on the premise is not within 500 feet from a public or parochial school or the principal campus of any college, university, or seminary. All officers, directors, general partners, and managing members with ownership of 10% or more have submitted the individual history records and fingerprints for the conduct of background checks as required. An inspection of the premise will be conducted prior to the issuance of a license to confirm the diagram submitted as accurate. I would also like to introduce Nicholas Zoff and Cassandra Ortler, which are present for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the council have any questions for Nick and Charlie? Sorry, that's how I know you, so, do you want to come up?
I have a quick question. Yeah. Is it, are you serving beer and wine or hard alcohol as well?
Beer and wine.
All right, I just.
Beer and wine.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
How long has Papa Bear Pizza been at the present location, and what's your average of clientele?
We're on our sixth year. Our, our average of our clientele.
How many? Like, what's, what's your peak days or peak operating hours?
This is literally the dumbest business I've ever.
Because you guys run out of pizzas.
Yeah, we sell out like in the first 15 to 30 minutes normally. We just did an expansion in the back, so we doubled our oven space, we went from like 155 square foot kitchen to 480 square feet, added a walk-in, and just opened our doors. So we've just been, the doors locked, just doing curbside, we're just the weirdest business you've ever seen.
So the, is it?
It's ridiculous.
Obviously, there's a sit-down area, so that's where you want to serve the alcohol, or is it, are they able to?
We have a, about a little over 1,000 square feet in front of the house, still not sure how that's going to flow. So previously, I owned large-scale nightclubs and bars in Denver, so like 50 to 70,000 hours a night revenue, four hours of operations. And so I'm used to large-scale liquor, this is going to be weird because we're already having problems with our takeout because our takeout's so, the demand's so high, so how many tables did we get this week? 30 people total for a week. And so what ultimately happens, we start taking calls at 1:00, then we fill up the oven space in 15-minute increments, 12 pieces, six per deck, and so that kind of dictates our flow of the night. So if you walk in on Friday at 5:15, the good possibility that the ovens will fail till 7:15, and so not a lot of people want to stick around for two hours waiting for food. So I don't know, and honestly, like, the liquor was, because of consumer demand, they all want to, you know, have a beer and have pizza. I don't know how it'll facilitate, how well or how many people are going to, we're going to be able to facilitate. I think on our slower days, we're discussing opening up Saturdays and Sunday days, at least in the summertime, people can sit out and have a beer and push them through, but I have no idea what the bottom of that will be.
Do you have to make an appointment to get a pizza?
Yeah, this is, this, seriously, this is, I've had a lot of restaurants, this is the dumbest restaurant I've ever owned, this is just.
Well, plus you have the outside patio area that sits between you and List Studios.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the patio, is, is that, the intent is to do?
Yeah. So what we're hoping is maybe by spending our hours in, off-peak times, that we'll actually drive business inside the doors on a more consistent and permanent basis, and if we offer beer and wine, then maybe we'll stay and have a beer or two while they wait 45 minutes or an hour for a pizza. So that's kind of what our inclination is, classic increases tax revenue for the city, so that's always good.
And are you still delivering, isn't there some restaurants that you're delivering level to, like, wasn't 300 Days of Shine?
300 Days of Shine, Trails Inn.
Right.
Yeah. So we're right there. We're at this weird stage where our demand has exceeded our production capabilities, but we can't grow our production capabilities to increase our team size. We've been at this cap level for like five, I've never had a business that sells out of its product 10, 15 minutes, opening the doors for five years straight. So it's a, it's a weird, it's a.
It's really.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We take a lot of love in it.
I call it evil, but, you know, whatever.
Right. But it's just one of those weird, weird things. We're trying to grow and hopefully expand it here as we're working on projects down south as well. So it's kind of the, let's see if we can get this thing, I grew up here, so I want something in the community that I've been in my whole life, so it's always a dream from going from Denver, downtown Denver, to something a little less stressful to be, you know, somewhere where I just, we're a weird place, we say we're not really a restaurant. If I wanted a restaurant, I'd be in Denver, I'd be in Colorado Springs. so it's always a dream from going from Denver, downtown Denver, to something a little less stressful to be, you know, somewhere where I just, we're a weird place, as we say, we're not really a restaurant. If I wanted a restaurant, I'd be in Denver, I'd be in Colorado Springs, where we can do five to 10 times the multiple in sales, everything being the same. Real estate here is like $40, $45 a square foot, Denver it's like $50. And yet, you can do so much more in the cities than you can in a town like Monument, grow sales just because of our limited hours. So it really has to be kind of a labor of love here. And so I just, I just want to make food for my neighbors and my friends, I live in Woodmore, we just, so we kind of operate in a weird fashion, and so that's why our customers have been ridiculously patient for us, and they'll wait two, I would never wait four hours for pizza, but they'll wait four hours, they'll call on Thursday for pizzas on Sundays. Community's been good to us, we want to kind of reciprocate, make sure we keep around for them. That's kind of where we're at.
I think that's amazing. You know, Yogi Bear said, "Cut my pizza in four, because I can't eat six."
Good man.
Okay, if there's no more, if there's no more questions.
I had a question, really quickly, about the license, and I don't know if this is a town question, but, so you're going to serve the alcohol there, you're not, because I just had an idea, you're not going to get beer from like Pike's Peak and sell that to go with the pizza, it's just going to be on premises? Is that the license type that you have?
Oh, yes, yeah, mine is Pike's Peak here, because they're a local company.
Sure.
We're only organic, so we're not. They're probably in beer, beer, too, but it will only be on.
And you have the space for the kegs and all the liquor aspect of it?
Well, we'll go as, as it continues, we'll see. We built in a walk-in, we converted the back area to a four-fold.
Nice.
So I have a walk-in that can hold, if we do a coney keg, can hold 16 in there at a time.
Okay.
But I can't imagine, to be honest, with people that are liquor writing, that's a lot of beers, that's like 300, 400 beers a day, it'd be like $4,000.
If people are waiting two hours for a pizza, I mean, you might do well.
I mean, maybe.
But I think it'll probably be years and hands and getting.
Okay. Okay.
But only on premises.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Then, the way these work, we need to have a motion made. The context of the motion is on page 17 in your packet. All right, so we have to have, forgot about that, so we're going to open this up for public hearing, and people are going to be able to speak for or against granting you your liquor license. All right, do we have anybody here in Town Hall that would like to speak for or against? Okay, seeing none. Luke, is there anybody online that would like to speak about this? Okay, then, I'll bring it back for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a hotel and restaurant liquor license to Ichabod Limited DBA Papa Bear Pizza, located at 243 Washington Street, Suite B, based on the hearing findings.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Nice haircut, by the way.
Let us know when the beer starts flowing.
I was hoping for one of those apple-like pizza. I, I'm always getting one of those when we're, we got.
The apple?
Come and get some. Guys, we'd love to see you all.
Okay, where is the agenda? I'm getting there. Yeah, all right, we're going to move on to ordinance 6A, ordinance 052023, and ordinance adopting and applying the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code 2023 edition. Ms. Booth?
Good evening. So this item was originally heard March 6. We asked the council to table it while we looked into the public notice requirements, and it was deemed that they did not apply in this instance. So we have this item back before you. I have the Pike's Peak Regional Building, Building Official Roger Level here, if you would like, and we have the presentation from last time, if you'd like him to go through it as well, but otherwise, he's here for questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Level? Would you like him to go through the entire presentation? I, because I had one question, and it was about puzzle rooms. Was, was hoping that puzzle rooms would be good for residential housing, so, you know, the escape rooms, did you see that, that change in the, the code? No? All right, we'll move on. It's a thing, right? Okay.
I, I just want to verify that this is so much better for us than flying with the state. That's why we're doing this, right?
This is, this is.
That would be correct, council member. The state mandated codes, if we are updating a building code after July 1 of this year, then we have to go to the, to the minimum state codes, being the 2021 Energy Code unamended, as well as the Model Electric and Solar Ready Code that have additional provisions.
Who else?
Has there been any other towns, municipalities? That have made any changes or amendments to what, what the package was that was presented to us? Specifically, specifically for their, their, to meet their, to meet their concerns, their demand, or in, within their area?
Within our jurisdiction.
Yes.
No, no, so far, everybody has, it's, it's actually gone very smoothly, every jurisdiction that we've visited, so far, have all followed the exact same model code.
And, and which ones are that?
Let's see, we are, that, that's a good question, thank you. We started, City of Colorado Springs was our first, and they've completed adoption. Green Mountain Falls has completed adoption. Antutu has completed adoption. Fountain has completed adoption. We're still working with El Paso County and, and Palmer Lake has completed as well. So we're, we're coming down to the finish. On the scheduling with BOCC, we've done a work session with the OCC. BOCC is doing it by resolution rather than ordinance, so we'll only have one more, one more session with El Paso County. But they haven't had any amendments or changes to it either.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of small questions, but to answer where I think you're going with that, Monument could have supplemental building codes specific to Monument in addition to this code, correct?
They, that's what, that's what the appendix in the code is reserved for.
Right.
The goal and intent of the regional concept is to try and keep those changes or amendments to a bare minimum, so that the code is consistent across jurisdictions, but yes, that is.
And one of the reasons I was asking is, is I would, thank you, I would like to see or keep Monument unique in its design, especially the aesthetics, instead of the cookie cutter or the, like, when they start building apartments or condos, or they propose that, that it's just not this white, three or four-story building?
But that would be a design standard.
Yeah.
That would be, that could go in our code without affecting the building code.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, trying to see if that has to go just with ours?
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be in the building code. If you want, like, timbers or something, whatever, you know?
No, it just goes back to, if you think, like, when we were talking about the design of the pilot truck station, they're worried about how it looks matching up against the mountainscape type deal.
Right.
So I was just, I didn't know if it had just affected our code, or if it affected, or we put in the appendix.
Yeah, that, that would be.
As a reference, as a site reference or something like.
That wouldn't be a part of this, I, I wouldn't put it in the appendix with you for design standards?
That, that's correct, council member. The building code has no design standards in it. Fact of the matter is, you can build something as ugly as you want out of this code, and it allows it. It also doesn't disallow it.
So, so I have, I have a couple of questions that are kind of technical, technicalities. So like I said earlier, with the supplements, like, Denver's building code will have the model code, plus then they'll have the Denver supplements. And in, in, in our ordinance that we're adopting here, it says that we review and approve the proposed 2023 edition of the code, but it, but it doesn't say the Pike's Peak building code, and it kind of implies that it would be like the IBC 2023, which doesn't exist yet. And I don't know if that matters or not in this resolution, because in the, in the, in the second page where it says what we ordain, it's the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code 2023. So that, that code is the 2021 IBC code for the most part, and then the 2018 plumbing code, I think, and, and other ones, but this would be like a collective, this, this code would be a collective of all of those separate.
Correct.
Codes, right?
What the, what the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code is, is that, that's what we generally refer to as DUCO. Chapter one of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code contains all the administration aspects for the department. My role is as building official, what the, the, the role of our boards and committees. Chapter two, and, and those sections are all inclusive, so everything's in there. Chapter two of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code has all the licensing criteria. Licensing is done at the local level in the state of Colorado, with the exception of plumbers and electricians that are licensed through the state, so we register those.
Right.
Chapter three of the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code adopts by reference the model codes, those being the 2021 family of codes, to include the International Residential Code, International Building Code, International Mechanical Code, Fuel Gas Code, Energy Code, Existing Building Code, and then the Pool and Spa Code. The electrical and plumbing codes are adopted by the state of Colorado. And then, as an agent of the state for the state of Colorado, we have 12 months to adopt and enforce the plumbing and electrical code locally. The, interestingly enough, the state plumbing board, as of last Friday, adopted the 2021 International Plumbing Code. So within a year, we have to adopt and enforce that code. And I'll, I'll tell you, as it relates back to council member Romanella's question, we are tracking that very closely, because if we update, remember, if we update the building code after July 1 of this year, then that triggers moving to the state plumbing, or I'm sorry, the.
Energy.
Energy code to include the Model Electric and Solar Ready Codes. There is legislation at the state that, if passed, will remove that plumbing code adoption as a trigger. So we're watching that very closely, because we would very much like to see that trigger removed.
Yeah, and, and I would, too.
So can I just bottom line this, and as a businessman, and just say, we're trying to be as least communist as possible, and here, Polis, and everybody else can do whatever they want to do, but it's better to go with what we're doing than part of the state, and that's what we're doing right now, right? Bottom line. Thank you. No, I'm not, I'm okay, you know?
I'll tell you this, we, when we first started the adoption process, we went through the 21 Energy Code, and we had a very extensive list of modifications to that code. House Bill 1362 came out, we opposed that, as, as I testified at the House and Senate in opposition to that bill. What that resulted in is we had to go back, throw out all our amendments, and start over on the 21 code, but we worked incredibly hard on that to make it as, as user-friendly as possible and to, to hit the minimum requirements.
Appreciate what you guys do.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I do, too, thank you.
Verbiage in there is not.
No, I, so what I wanted to do is just make sure that we were referring to, because this is the whereas's, and then this is where we're incorporating the code, and this, where it's incorporating, it talks specifically about Pike's Peak Regional Building Code, but I just wanted to make the comment that this is not the 2023 IBC code, which isn't out yet anyway, but it, when it just says "the code," but collectively, this series of codes, which, you know, books are this high. Can you, can you tell her to be, can you tell her to be quiet? That was odd, anyway. So, so I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page that we're talking about, because this is the 2021 version of the code, but it's their 2023 code.
Beagle if it's not written.
Right, but, but it is, it is here.
Yeah, I know, it's on the second.
Right.
I'm just talking about.
But it's also in the title, and, and the title of the ordinance is correct, right?
Well, we can find out if somebody wants to make a motion, right?
Well, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Are we all done with questions and comments about this?
I'm good.
Right, we're, we're entrusting our building department to take care of us.
Don't screw up.
Yeah, thank you. All right, do I, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 052023. An or.
This is a public hearing, do you want to open it up?
Put it down here, because I'm going to forget again. All right, so this is open for a public hearing, if there's anybody here who would like to speak for or against this ordinance.
Good evening, my name's Josh Peterson, I'm a fan of our homes, I'm part of the HBA's Code Adoption Subcommittee that reviews all the codes, and I'd just like to speak up in support of Roger and his group, and the hard work that they put together, and working through all the challenges that we have, and I think this is the best step forward.
Thank you. Luke, is there anybody online who would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 052023, an ordinance adopting and applying the Pike's Peak Regional Building Code 2023 edition, repealing the previous edition of such code.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mayor Lakine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Level. Next up, ordinance number 082023, an ordinance amending Title 18 of the Monument Municipal Code, remove Appendix 1, 2, and 3, and all references to appendices. Ms. Booth?
So I'm requesting that we remove these three appendices. They are administrative documents, they're applications, checklists, and agreements. Even the agreements are called templates in the, the appendices. We're not asking to change any of the requirements in Title 18, we're just asking for the ability to modify these documents to adequately, accurately reflect what's in the code. If you would like us to run some of them by you, so you can see, we can do that, we can put them in your packet, email you, or we could, seems like I, I run a lot of things by Councilmember King, or, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem King, just to get some ideas, but it's really all we're doing is trying to make some corrections to some errors that are in there, and to streamline the process, not to make it easier for anyone, just to make it a more transparent of what you have to submit when you're submitting an application to the town, based on what the code says, and also in some of the agreements, what is required of the town based on the type of development you're doing. So again, not changing anything in Title 18 as far as what is required, just updating the forms and documents to accurately reflect that.
I have a question. As stated, this talks about removing the appendices. If you remove them, isn't there a hole?
No, because we went back through Title 18 and took out any references to the appendices, and then just referenced either the application or the checklist as, that we would be providing.
So then you're actually changing the context, the, the language of the, because the, these appendices are part of a previous ordinance.
Correct.
So you're changing language in an, an existing ordinance to remove.
the appendices and reference something different.
Correct. So right now it says it references the application and checklist in Appendix 1. So what we have changed the language to say is the application or the checklist, the final plat checklist, the preliminary PUD checklist.
See, that's the kind of thing I expect the council to see every line item that's being changed in an ordinance that's already been approved by the.
It is. It's part, that part is in your ordinance before you tonight.
Every single, I didn't see every single one.
So the, the actual applications or checklist? No, but the references within Title 18 that reference Appendix 1, Appendix 2, those are in there.
It says, it says checklist, didn't it?
Yeah.
So I guess what he's asking, and my biggest concern would be, does this change anything that comes before the board?
No. You never see checklist or applications. The only thing you should be seeing that I don't know that you have been is the public improvements agreement.
Will these changes be complete before any applicants? Packages come before the board?
That's our goal. We've been trying to work on them. As we found these errors, we've been redlining them and trying to make the corrections. We just can't use them until they're either updated in ordinance or removed uncodified. And in most places, what you do is you adopt your ordinance and then from there, you create your checklist and stuff to, to reflect what you've just adopted. Very rarely are those things codified with that ordinance because they're, you need to update them, you change them, but it's based on what the code says.
So if I understand it, right now you're handcuffed because the checklist are ordinances. So what you're asking is for the checklist to be checklist, not ordinances, is that?
Correct.
Because Title 18 provides the guidance and then the checklist is, is a, an administrative function.
Right. It's a mirror reflection of what Title 18 already requires. It's just in a format that somebody else decided worked and/or typed up quickly and put in typos and misrepresented. There are some line items in, like I think, one of our final plat checklist. There's an item on the checklist that isn't in the code and it doesn't make any sense. If we were to strictly enforce that, we would have to be requiring everyone who brings in a final plat to bring in a document that has no relevance to a final plat. It's not required on Title 18 in the checklist in the code, but it somehow got put on a checklist in the appendix. So if you go by what.
Ordinance, so they have to obey it.
Right. And we have to go by the most restrictive, so this requires it, so then we have to make them do it. If we were to go, you know, right down to the line. It's obviously not been done because nobody's been turning in this document. But that's the kind of thing that we're trying to get away from is get these things that aren't required off. There are some things that are up to the planning director's discretion and we're going to itemize those. And if they're still needed, we're still going to need them. But there are some, like in that case, an item that's listed that isn't anywhere in our code, but it's on the checklist that's codified. So those are some of the things we've run into.
So I have a question. Are you, if, if the appendices get removed, are the, is there a link in Title 18, are there links in Title 18 to these templates, the updated correct templates?
There are no links. So what we went back through is just changed it to the final plat checklist. So we will have the final plat checklist. They are online right now, so they would still just be online. They would just be the updated version. So they're on the website. So if somebody wants to come in and do an application, they can get a copy of the application online. They can get the checklist online before they even talk to us if they wanted to see what was going on.
The, um, the appendices contains the application, but you have to go into the previous ordinance to get to them. And it's 337 something pages.
It's not in Unicode. It's not, it's undocumented on demand, but the appendices itself isn't even included in Unicode when people go to look on the line there.
Which is weird. So just to get this on, on record, because when I first read this, I'm thinking you're taking all these checklists out and then it's up to who's ever in your seat to decide what's appropriate or not. And if you left tomorrow and somebody else came in, they'd be scratching their head, going, I don't know what to do about this. But it sounds to me like you've already addressed this and because the code is codified and has to be followed, that it's just creating a lot of other busy work for you. Otherwise, to go back and forth and, and collect things you don't need and, and then you can't use them anyway.
Right.
So, um, so thanks for explaining that because when I first saw it, you know, I, I would, my, my recommendation was going to be to kick this down the road so we could just, just try to figure out what all is going on here. But, um, but I, I feel a little bit more comfortable with you saying that, you know, we're still bound by Title 18 and.
Yes. Title 18 says specifically what's required for each, each application. And so the checklist should accurately reflect that. And right now they don't, but that's our goal and our mission is to, we've been redlining them as we find it and marking up what needs to be added, what needs to be removed to reflect what has been approved.
And quite frankly, you know, just to put it out there, we, we had a problem one time when, actually, it ended up being the code getting changed. And we thought it was going to be one specific way and it wasn't that way and it had to get repealed. And I, I just didn't really want to get into that situation again.
And what I, like I said, what I can do is, you know, I know I run a lot of things by different people. I can show you an existing checklist and what our new format looks like that we think will work better, just so you can see afterwards. But like again, we are not changing any of the requirements themselves. Those are in Title 18 and not being changed. It's just the forms, the format, the text.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your explanation.
Um, one last question. Um, so do you guys, so you've caught these mistakes and you guys are fixing them. But is there some kind of process where you review them like every six months? Is that written anywhere where the town or whoever is in charge of that will go and review it with a committee? And you guys go over them and look at, make sure that everything is matching, so we're not doing this again?
We, we do it internally as staff. Like even today, I got an email from one of my staff members saying that Title 18 says, you know, C Section 18, blah, blah, blah. That section doesn't even exist. So we have it highlighted and we have a file, a running list of things that need to be updated and changed as we go. And this won't be, this will be one of many I see coming forward where it's just cleanup. It's a code scrub, not changing context, but just updating content to get some of those errors out. So that's what we do internally as staff is as we're reading through it, we're a new staff. So we're learning the code, we're reading through it, we're redlining it and coming up with ideas. But also a list of areas where we know we're going to be coming back to you with ordinance changes to correct those.
Okay.
And, you know, I will say the development community also is very good of pointing out errors in our applications and documents. So there is a committee of sorts out there.
Mr. Foreman, I see you bursting at the seams. Do you have any comments that you'd like to add feedback onto this?
I think she's covered it very well. Awesome. This is a public hearing item, as I've been told. So we will open this up for comment. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to this ordinance. Okay, seeing none. Anybody online, Luke? No. Okay, so we will bring it back one more time for discussion.
How long do you think this is going to take?
I don't think it'll take long at all. Like I said, we've already done a lot of the red lines. We've created some forms that we think will work, so it's really going to be Luke's job.
I mean, you're, this is, you're going to be in Title 18 making these changes?
No, no, just on the checklist and the applications. We are not touching Title 18.
Okay, because I saw in Title 18, a bunch of places where you could do a search and replace of Board of Trustees to Town Council. Those, we probably should talk to Bob about how we pass a, uh, a resolution that allows carte blanche change to all documentation that says Board of Trustees and update it.
But just to clarify, she did say that they are taking out references to the appendices if this is passed. They're, they're removing that from.
Right, I saw them. I saw them. They're right here.
Just to clarify.
The references are, but the Title 18 itself is not.
It's not modified, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you thinking that we should put this on the attorney to review before we do anything on this? Okay, no.
Attorney has, we had them review it before it came to you.
So if there's no further discussion, I will look for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 082023, an ordinance amending Title 18 of the Monument Municipal Code to remove Appendix 1, 2, and 3 and all references to appendices.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 252023, Resolution of the Town of Monument, of the Town Council of the Town of Monument, Colorado approving an investment policy. Ms. Berjoi?
Thank you. Three investment strategies have been presented to the Town Council on April 3rd, 2023. The presentations were made by Wells Fargo, Sea Safe, and Piper Sandler and Company. The investment strategy and estimated annual investment income for Wells Fargo and Piper Sandler and Company was pretty similar. On a 10 million investments, we were expected to earn an estimated investment income of about $450,000 at the time. Obviously, the interest rate is changing as we speak every day. They also provided a latter approach of six, nine, 12, and 15 months. The Sea Safe estimated investment income was higher, about $500,000. But the investment strategy was short term, from one day to three months. The short term investment strategy approach is expected to have more volatility. So this, the interest rates may go down in time. So this $500,000 estimated investment income may not be $500,000. Staff has reviewed the investment strategy and had additional meetings with each of the three financial companies. There were three main key performance indicators. We reviewed maximize revenue, lowest cost, and lowest risk. Based on staff analysis, staff recommends approval of the Piper Sandler, Sandler and Company investment strategy. So staff has submitted Resolution 25-2023 to request the Town Council to approve the 2023 investment policy.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, um, I don't, I should have brought the packet in front of me that we had last time. But I, if I remember correctly, Wells Fargo was slightly better. So I was kind of surprised to see Piper Sandler. Can, can you kind of take me through real quick the, the reasoning behind that, please?
Of course. So when we started the presentation, I believe two weeks ago, last meeting, we mentioned the reason we would like to invest money is to take advantage of the high interest rates, but also to diversify risks, meaning we're trying to diversify from doing business with just one bank and to diversify with other financial partners. The income was pretty similar, so when we had the follow-up meetings with all the three companies, they both gave us Wells Fargo and Piper, Piper Sandler, they gave us the same interest rate. So it was similar.
And right now, to clarify, we've got some investments with Wells Fargo, but none with Piper Sandler? I thought it was the other.
So with Wells Fargo, we have our operating account, so all the businesses that we do on a daily basis. We also have a small account for Aflac. And then with Piper Sandler, we have the COP bond, the water bond.
Um, I will say this, the latter approach on the bonds is very wise and it doesn't matter what company you really go with on that. That is the wise thing to do and the only thing you can do based on municipal regulations. As a member of the, uh, the Water Creek, the Watershed Board, I did ask and talk to some of my, I hate to say this, but I'm gonna, um, uh, we do do Wells Fargo and they're very underwhelmed. The performance is good, but they're underwhelmed by the service. So I think Piper Sandler would probably be the wise way to go on, on that situation. Yeah.
Our experience or my personal experience have been good with both companies, but definitely we heard the same feedback from other partners.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments? Then, um, I will look for a motion.
I.
He made a motion too.
I will make a motion to pass Resolution Number 25-2023. The, a resolution of the Town of, Town Council of the Town of Monument, Colorado approving an investment policy with Piper Sandler.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Going to say yes due to the fact that there was a highly suggested and recommended by staff themselves that did the legwork on it.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Moves us on to public comments. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody here who would like to make a comment? Haley?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen, Councilwomen. Haley from Tri-Lakes Cares here. Just wanted to take a brief moment to give you, uh, give you a heads up on an email that I'll be sending out shortly, inviting you all to an upcoming graduation of some of our clients who are participating in one of our self-sufficiency programs, previously called Getting Ahead, now called Stable. We've taken something that has been a national program, ran it for several years, found some areas that we felt our community was missing and our clients were missing some training on, tweaked it, rebranded it, and now we're offering it to our community better than ever. It's not something that folks get to sit in on watch, just like a, a therapy session. We wouldn't watch you and sit in and watch you and you have your therapist. We would invite you to the end and the congratulations and the graduation of this. This is sometimes the only thing that some of our clients have ever graduated. Some of them haven't graduated in the past. In fact, there's some folks who have taken the program before that reside in their vehicle. And so this is a really monumental celebration for folks who are making changes in their life to better their future for them themselves and their families. And we would invite you all to come celebrate with us, uh, that graduation and get to hear a little bit more about the program and meet some of the folks who participate. So I'll be sending out an invite to each of your emails. I just wanted to give you a little bit of update about what that was going to be. And if there's anybody who's here attending that is interested, let me know and I will send you an invite as well. It will be May 9th in the evening, like six to eight. I'm sorry, May 20, May 9th is our annual fundraiser. Too many things on my mind. Sorry, May 9th is our annual, uh, our fundraiser. This will be, I believe, May 27th. So, um, the details for sure will be accurate in the email that I send you with the detail. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that would like to make a public comment? Okay, Luke, anybody online that would like to make a public comment? Okay. Okay, Ms. Elliott, you can unmute.
Hi, yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I have a question, what obviously is rhetorical because you cannot answer in, in public comment. But it was brought to my attention that a mailer, I believe, from the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce, hopefully not the town, has been sent out to new residents south of North Gate, and, which is not the town of Monument, and the mailer includes a letter from Mayor Mitch Lakine welcoming, welcoming them to the area. But unfortunately, the material that goes along with the mailer, the welcome package, is material that promotes Denver and Colorado Springs. There's absolutely zero content to promote the businesses in Monument. So we have a Colorado Springs magazine, we have an official visitor's guide to Denver, we have a brochure on Garden of the Gods, we have the cog railway waits you brochure. We have a Glen Eagle Black Forest card, we have the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce card, and there's a, I think, a furniture store, Woodley's, that's included in this as well. There's no business in the town of Monument that is included in this welcome package to people in Northern Colorado Springs. But yet, the letter that is welcoming these people is from our mayor. I think that to the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce and to the mayor and to the board, this needs to be corrected, and you need to start promoting the town of Monument businesses.
I can't say that I disagree. I did not know that my name was going out there beyond the scope of Monument, so we'll have to have a conversation about that.
The second point. Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your explanation. The second thing I'd like to mention is that at the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Dinner on Friday night, there was a fifteen hundred dollar purchase by the mayor for a suite at the Sky Sox game, a Sky Sox, Sox game. And hopefully, if that's of the taxpayers' money, then I think we should know that. I didn't know there was an entertainment budget. If it's not, if it's a personal purchase, then great. Or are you going to pass a resolution that says the town of Monument will pay for that?
We have three minutes yet? I won't be answering any questions about my personal finances. That's all you have to know, Ms. Elliott.
No, I, I know that. This is, this is public comment, and I do not, do not expect any answers. Just historically speaking, I was a bit concerned about the fact that the town of Monument might be paying for that entertainment.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? I can't see the name. Can you? CMS?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible]. Yeah, Chad Smith from one six nine two three Buffalo Valley Path and Monument. As bizarre as the previous public speaker was, I just wanted to make a quick public comment about that same individual potentially filing a lawsuit against the town of Monument over a cora request. Additionally, to add to that, there is a current sitting councilman who was involved with that same individual with the no on to a campaign. I would like to request that that individual publicly announce that he will recuse himself from any proceedings in, in regard to anything from Ms. Elliott's purported lawsuit. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more public comment or any more comments from online? Luke? Okay, thank you, and we'll bring it back in here. Carrie?
I did want to address the comments about mailers. The TriLakes Chamber does not do mailers whatsoever. To the best of my ability, what I think has happened is that is a privately owned welcome wagon company. They are the ones that go out, they solicit with businesses to pay her to put their flyers into businesses. It's nothing to do, it's not owned by the town of Monument, it is nothing to do with you guys, nothing to do with us. They go through, and if the businesses of Monument choose not to pay to be in, then they won't be in. So, but it is a private company. It's the only thing I can guess as to what she is referring to. And she comes and gets some things from our program, from our visitor center to put in those packets for those people. So in return for that, we put in a little card for any businesses that might want to be interested to have more information. So I just thought I would help clarify that, that I believe that is where those businesses are coming from. So it's a private company that is doing that.
Okay, but I did sign a letter. Is that not the letter? Is that what this is about? Okay, well, then I would like a request to the person who owns this business that my name does not get sent out that's going to be promoting businesses outside of Monument. They do not have my permission. And I think that them doing that is actually, it's, it's definitely disingenuine. Because I didn't add my, I mean, I know I followed previous mayor Don Wilson's footsteps in doing this, and I don't know if he, his letters went out the same way, but if I ever knew I was, my name was out there promoting Colorado Springs and Denver businesses, I would never have added my name to the, to the mailer. Okay, is there any more public comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Anybody on the council have a comment they would like to make?
Yeah, I would like to discuss and give guidance or direction on our study sessions or workshops, whichever one you want to call them. They mean two different things. The study session is receiving briefs. Workshop is you're interacting, going back and forth, asking questions, getting a brief, working through a topic. I personally think that having three topics in a study session is not being productive. As example, we cut out talking about the budget, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to continue that on another one because we were trying to jump into two other ones. So I think we're putting too many things in that one hour. Another example is when we talked about the water. We ran out of time, we had to come back for another session, and we ran out of time again because they had, they wanted to, they had other topics to discuss in there. I think it should be limited, if we do these study sessions or workshops, it should be limited to one topic, one topic only. I think that the Monument Lake Pier today could have been put into the regular meeting timeframe. And I'm not sure how long Bob needed for effective council meetings to hold. But that packet that he, that we have is pretty, pretty extensive, so.
Yeah, I would think that would be one meeting in itself.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll agree. I think that giving better direction to the staff will help them better manage the work sessions or study sessions, whichever one that they're going to be. And also, and I don't know what the way forward is in, in assessing which topics are better discussed in open session, for lack of a termal, as opposed to, you know, keeping the study sessions or work sessions to, to one topic that we need to call them deep dives. But yeah, I, I'm with you. I, I think, and, and it helps, to me, it helps the staff focus on what we need to, we need to learn. And then they don't spin their wheels unnecessarily for, for other things. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Well, I, I agree with that. I, I don't like getting rushed through important things. I mean, if it's, if it's a couple of little small study session items, that's not, not so bad. But on this particular one, the budget and the council meeting ones, we need to be able to have some time to dig into it.
I agree, one hundred percent. And those things are too important to be rushed. And so maybe we shift what we do. And if it's something that is shorter, we move it to part of the regular agenda and move it out of the study session. I don't know the best way forward, but that might be something we discuss.
You remember exactly why we went to the, we, the pre-meeting study sessions.
Are you talking to me?
I'm talking to you.
Why?
We did this, we did this for the.
No, the budget is the biggest thing, and that's why we did this. Otherwise, we would have one focused topic on one focused day, not like ongoing study sessions every, before every meeting. I've never seen this in five years, so I don't know what, why this is happening or what's going on.
And when you get to, when you start talking, when you start doing the budget, maybe that should be the only topic on the.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
On the agenda, nothing else, because.
I agree.
Yeah, so I, 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 I see the purpose of a study session because that's getting a brief. I see the, I see the purpose of a workshop because, but that's interaction. I don't see the purpose of having it at every, before every meeting.
I would agree.
Okay, well, I mean, we can decide how we want to proceed and instruct town staff on, on how you would like things in the future.
If it's not going to be part of a regular meeting, it should be an urgent issue. Okay, in my opinion, if we're going to take our time, which we're not getting paid for, by the way, let's just say that. If we're going to take our time and do this, that's not part of a regular meeting, it should be something that involves a public that needs to be engaged, like budget does that, right? Like, what are we doing with our money? I, I agree with that. But every little detail, no, we don't, it should be part of our regular meeting.
Also, I, I, I think right now that the two big topics that've come across this table and that needs to be addressed is budget. I mean, as an example, I've already, at my work, I've already, I've already delivered my budget for next year. And in the past, what I've watched as, as a resident, that this budget gets kicked down the road until because of one thing or another gets kicked down.
The witching hour?
Yeah, but I think it's based on dates of things that we owe. It's not like we.
Right.
We, we've hunted it. It's because there's, there's dates set by the state that allows us time.
And I think we've been efficient with that. To be honest, we've been efficient with that. I really do believe that. Yeah, absolutely. But I don't think we need to have a meet, a, 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 a sub meeting before every meeting about something. I mean, I just don't think it's.
Unless it's dealing with the budget, unless it's dealing with water, I think those are the two big topics that, that's on the residents' mind. Besides development, which is coming, that train wreck's coming as well, so.
But those are going to be ordinances, and those won't be workshops and.
You're predicting a train wreck? Oh, wow, okay.
Let's.
I think we, we owe the staff better, better direction and better intent. What, what do we, what do we as a council, because they're preparing information to present to us. So we, we owe the staff better intent.
Direction.
And, and then, which will then give direction. So what do we want as a council? What do we want out of work sessions, and what do we want out of study, study sessions? And how often do we want them? And then they can, they're, they're smart enough to figure out how to, how to skin that cat.
Well, in the past, Mr. Foreman, I know that you have like done, hey, we got this issue coming up, it's a big issue, we need to handle this issue. It wasn't like we're just going to do something to do something, but there's something to be addressed. And if there's, if that's happening, we should do that, and budget is part of that. But if there's something big, like we had a topic, I remember, we were here for four hours one day, like on a Friday afternoon or something. It was a big deal, but otherwise, no, we don't need to do it.
Okay, we take direction from you as a council. So we're looking for that direction. I think somebody said that. We're looking for that direction. If you don't want to have work sessions prior to the normal meetings, then we'll eliminate those unless you want to have them just on budget. If you want to have them just on budget, then we'll have those on the dates that we just gave. Or we can move those to the regular session, if you want to have those.
So to piggyback off of what Ken said, to me, there's three big rocks. Call them alligators. Closest alligator to, to the canoe is, to me, is water, development, and budget. Budget never goes away. We're kind of stuck with that one every year, right? But, so those, out of those three, what, what do we need to know coming down the pipe? We got a, a taste of that on budget with the, with the, with a calendar of events that Mona provided us. So to me, that, that kind of takes care of it. I, I'd like to have a, a chance to kind of go through the, the next, who's it, five years of projects and whatnot. And maybe, and then the council can come back and say, let's add, you know, infrastructure, renewable infrastructure. Let's add Old Denver Highway expansion. Because that, that's, that's an ugly baby coming down the pipe. So those are some of the things that I think we owe to the staff in the very near future. As far as development, I'm, I'm not the sharpest crayon in the box, so I'm, I'm going to need some, some education. But I can do that on my own without taking time from the rest of the council. And then water's coming down the pipe, you know, literally. So we, we need to kind of figure out what we want as a council to kind of address so that the staff can then adjust and prepare and, and get the, the right material and data points for us. So I don't know, as a council, how do we want to address these, these topics?
Well, it sounds like a lot of these are part and parcel of what we should be doing as a council.
Yes.
So why are we doing separate meetings? It should be part of what we're doing as a council on the regular agenda. Now, budget, always, every year, it's like you got to have some meetings and do that. And there are some water projects that come up, or Mr. Tarnish and our town manager has come and said, hey, these are big projects impending, let's have a discussion about it. If that's eminent and epic, we should do that, but not just a session for a session.
Yeah. I see, so what I see, the meetings prior, the, the work sessions, study sessions, it's to get everybody, call it educated, on the same sheet of music. So that we're not taking time out of the regular meeting because we, we don't want to sit here until midnight, right? Just to ask basic questions, like, let's call it that. So to me, I see the study sessions to kind of level the bubbles, the infamous level, level the bubbles. So that then, on the regular agenda, now we can, we're all working off the same sheet of music. Now we can sink our teeth into the no kidding, what do we need to solve and what do we need to understand of the problem that's coming down the pipe? But I, I, I'm with you, it, it shouldn't be every meeting, so as an example, you know, the state has condemned the, the water tank. They haven't.
That, that would, that would require a special.
You'll get an email.
I mean, very, right, that would, that would require a special.
We're coming in early, here's what's happened, here's what needs to happen during the regular agenda, go. So as an example, that, that's what I envision as a work session, for example.
Okay, can I just interrupt? So the one thing we didn't get to is effective council meetings. And we're gonna, we're, I think what we should do at this point, because I, we can, this isn't really discussion time. This is council comments, and then we move on. I think we should take the email that our attorney sent us, digest it, ask any questions, and then forward the questions to Mike and the attorney. And we will figure out how we get these three primary things that were brought up, budget, development, and water. And what's going to constitute a workshop, what's going to constitute, I bet, I think we all agree that we don't want to be here early every single meeting.
And, and just to, to throw one more thing into that elephant in the room of three things. There's also parts of the charter that we're going to have to implement coming up too. And so that would be something to bring up in your questions to Mike in the emails, because we're going to have to deal with that.
Okay, is there any other common, council comments not related to what we've just talked about? Done? Okay, and I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.